Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the District 4 Town Hall Meeting on May 10th, 2017. So this evening, I want to let you know that you have the agenda in front of you. But based upon the comments I've received of recent, I modified it slightly based upon, I believe, the needs that you said you wanted to have here. The first item I need to see is the Public Works Director here, Louis Atwell.
I'm here.
Oh, there he is. Okay. The first item, then, I will ask Mr. Louis Atwell from our City of Inglewood Public Works Department, who is our Public Works Director and Engineer, to please join me. There are several things that we're making some changes on, and it has to do with the recent loss of one of our residents. And so my heart goes out to... Is Wesley Newman here? Has Wesley Newman made it yet? He recently lost a loved one that lived in our district, as Wesley lives also in our district, but Sonya Lee was a victim that recently happened on Van Ness just a few Fridays ago, where they had that horrendous automobile collision. And so that raised the level of concern about the comments I was getting via emails, well, what's the City of Inglewood doing about it? What's the City of Inglewood doing about it? And I had to share with the family that there's a multiple cities, multiple agency issue. Van Ness actually butts up against LA County, City of Los Angeles, City of Inglewood, and also the City of Hawthorne, which then means for law enforcement, you have the Inglewood PD, you have the LAPD, you have the Sheriff's Department, and you have Hawthorne PD. So I want to share with you what Inglewood is doing and trying to work in partnership. And also with reference to the flow of traffic, which has been a problem for those that was here at our July Town Hall Meeting in 2016. It was your voices that was heard, and now we're going to give you the results of those voices. Please help me welcome our Public Works Director, Louis Atwell.
Thank you for coming tonight, and good evening. Again, my name is Louis Atwell. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Inglewood. Before I get into really the meat of my presentation, just a little bit about the Public Works Department. We're made of about nine divisions, almost 150 employees. We're responsible for all of the city infrastructure. That includes roadways, sidewalks, sewer, water, parklands. We help the Parks Department build their fields. And we also are responsible for the Police Department's police vehicles and other city equipment. One of the other things that we do is we maintain, construct, plan, design, and construct the city's infrastructure as well. And we do this through the capital improvement program that we budget for every year. Some of our accomplished projects this year within District 4 include 18 streets. We paved 18 streets last year, and that's almost 12 lane miles of streets and almost a million square feet. We continue to do more streets each year in different parts of the city than we did in the past, and I think you've probably noticed that when you drive down Century Boulevard, which I happen to be stuck in driving here. And I apologize for that. I always compare it to surgery, and surgery is painful. But when we're done with the surgery, we're usually moving pretty good. The other projects that we've done this year, or last year, I should say, we completed three alleys. And before, we weren't doing too many alleys. I can't tell you how many alleys we've done, but it's probably at least 10 to 12, maybe 15 alleys in the past few years. Hi, Willie. Good to see you. So we're doing quite a few alleys as well. Some of the current projects that we're working on is the sidewalk replacement project that will kick off this summer. The Streets and Alleys Rehabilitation Project, which is the one we did 18 streets last year. This year, we won't do too many streets on the east side of the city. We'll primarily focus on the west side of the city because we alternate each year from one side of the city to the other. That gives us better prices. That way, the contractor's not bouncing around trying to do a checkerboard. So this year, we plan on doing two alleys, one east of Crenshaw Boulevard from 104th to 108th, and the other is near Darby and Dixon Streets, in between, actually, from 102nd to 104th. Now, everybody's favorite project, Century Boulevard. Well, people used to complain that it wasn't... When is it going to get constructed? Well, now it's in construction, and we're getting complaints again. So hopefully, we can get past this. It'll take us to complete the entire stretch. It'll take us into 2019. However, the work that we're doing now will be completed by the end of 2018. And that work is essentially from Van Ness all the way to Doty, and then from Inglewood Ave to La Cienega. That is the sections that we're currently working on. Well, then, possibly later this year, early next year, we'll get into from Doty to Inglewood Ave, and then we'll be done. Thank goodness. Couple other projects that we're working on. The Councilman mentioned that we're working on some multi-agency projects. When he says multi-agency, what he really means is projects that we don't have as much control over that we normally would. Now, I could take full, maybe, credit for Century Boulevard because we're working on that, but both Van Ness, which happened to be striped for two lanes in each direction, then they called it a road diet, and they striped it in one lane in each direction with a median. It was a striped median. We are going back, as the Councilman mentioned, to two lanes in each direction. It is difficult to move LA County, but there were enough voices to do that from both you and also the Public Works Department and the Councilmen. The other project is Imperial Highway project. Okay. I know. That project is also a Los Angeles County project, okay? However, we are providing funding for that project, and we are working with the county to see if there's any way that we, the city, can take control of that project. So we're working with the county right now. It'll go through the City Council eventually, and maybe we can become the lead agency and speed up the construction of that project. And that concludes my presentation. You're welcome. Thank you.
So let me chime in with a few comments, if you don't mind. He did talk about the Van Ness Avenue, and how many were here in July? Isn't it a blessing to know that your voices were heard? This is why you come to the meetings, and I've shared with you repeatedly where there is knowledge, there is power. Your testimony about what you experienced on Van Ness has now got us the improvements that we need. And you will see, starting Saturday, is when they're going to start the process, again from Century on the north to Imperial Highway on the south. We already have the meter boards out there alerting you, delayed traffic, et cetera. I have pictures out there already to share with you as well. But also, there was another issue that came up that he didn't acknowledge, but through his leadership and support, we were able to take care of it. Because of the traffic now wanting to find alternative routes to travel, they don't want to be on Imperial Highway, they don't want to be on Crenshaw, they want to go east-west, but they don't want to go on the boulevards, and now we're dealing with 104th Street, 108th Street. 108th is wide enough, and we do have a left-hand turn lane, but not at 104th Street. So one resident, one resident spoke to me and said, "Can you help us?" And that resident said, "When you approach on 104th and you approach Van Ness, and you're getting ready to... Between there's an alley, and then you're approaching Van Ness going east, there's one lane." Because there's residential parking at Curbside, so therefore, if you're ready to make a left-hand turn and there's no designated left-hand turn lane, guess what? You can't turn left. So thanks to your neighbor, and he's here, let's give the neighbor a hand. He knows who he is. We now have, and the Public Works Director, we're going to give him a hand. Because with that effort, we now have signage up there on the south side of 104th, between that alley and Van Ness, of no parking Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 6:00. That way, it eases up some of the pressures. But I thought it was critical that you were aware of that because you need to know that it's the squeaky wheel that gets the oil. If you know anything about Claude Matthews and myself from District 4, we are good listeners, and we will take to heart your information. Because if you take the time to call us, email us, it's of value to you, and which I take it personally, and I make sure I carry your water. So that being said, that being said, I also want to acknowledge another item because anytime you're an elected official, there's a fight. There's five members on the council, and we all fight for one thing: Benjamins. How much money can we get for our respective city and for our districts? And one of the areas we work on is Public Works Director on how he can appropriate whatever funding he may get in order to assist us, to help us improve the quality of life. You may not always get it as fast as you want, but the main thing, knowing that in heart, I'm making sure that it does get done, such as we did the paving of the Van Ness, and now we're talking about doing Imperial Highway. But there's another one, these hidden owners that some people don't always know about that you also need to be aware of. As you remember, the last several years, we're now starting to do alleys. Alleys are hard to do because you need gas tax money, and it's very restrictive of what you can use. But I'm proud to announce that in this year's budget, which is between now and October, we're looking to repave an alley from 104th on the north to 108th on the south, between Crenshaw on the west to that little alley on 100... Between 100... I'm sorry, 8th place. Yes? Okay, let us... Let me finish my other comment. The other alley I want you to be made aware of is those that live in Darby-Dixon. We're actually doing an alley between 102nd on the north to 104th on the south, and it's actually between Dixon and Darby Streets. There's an alley in between there, and so we're going to repave those also in this budget. But I want you to be made aware of, it takes a while, one, to find the money; number two, it takes a while to keep the money, because anyone knows what we're going through, and I'll give you a sidebar information. If it wasn't for the Public Works Director here, the Mayor of our city, and the support of Congresswoman Maxine Waters, $2 million, I got earmarked for Imperial Highway, and I had to make sure it got tied down before the oath of office was taken on January 17th because that was going to... We were going to lose that $2 million. And thanks to the Congresswoman Waters holding her feet to the fire, and the Public Works Director knowing how to appropriate the money, we're going to get Imperial Highway repaved this year. Okay. All right. So in answer to the time, we're going to move forward. There was a question or comment the young lady had for the Speaker. Speak up. Oh, wait a minute. We need to get a mic. We need help. We're recording, so we want to make sure we have...
Thank you. When you say you are doing Century Boulevard, are you widening Century Boulevard? Are you repaving Century Boulevard? And do you have any federal funds that are helping you to do this?
Great question. We're actually widening portions of Century Boulevard to make room for ADA. So it may not be the street width, however, there are some sidewalk portions that need to meet ADA, which is Americans with Disabilities Act. So we're actually doing a few other things than that. We're putting in quite a bit of storm drain lines. They're percolation basins. We're trying to percolate into our aquifers. So we're taking storm water, putting in 60-inch stormwater pipelines underneath the street and having it percolate into the local aquifer. So that's included. It's full rehabilitation, so we're removing all of the pavement, all of the concrete that's out there, and replacing it. And that's what makes this project $40 million. That's probably the most expensive project, public project, because we know what's being built out there right now in the city's history. And as far as federal funds, I don't think there are any federal funds in that project. There are Metro funds, and there's ROPS money as well, which is, we have a bond through the Redevelopment Agency for that project.
Okay. One more question, we've got to move on. Wait to get the mic. We need a mic. Who's got the mic?
I need to have someone from there, because the line was fixed.
This is called technical difficulties.
Lawrence Haley blocked Clapton for Fifth Avenue between 104th and 108th. To the redevelopment gentleman, is there any intentions of slurring or repaving the streets in our District Center Heights, avenues 1 through 8? I've lived there for 16 years, and I've never seen anything done.
Okay. That's a great question. What we do is we evaluate our streets based on the pavement management system. We also look at them based on both field observations and also people calling in and complaining, okay? Squeaky wheel, right? So those are the things that we look at. The first thing we do is we try to repair the streets with the potholes. I know Imperial's one of them, and it's taken us a little bit longer, but the residential streets is a huge focus for us. And because they're not the most expensive streets to do, it doesn't require federal funding or any of this other stuff, so we are looking at streets to do constantly on a yearly basis. In addition to that, slurry sealing is very important as well. So we look at streets that aren't quite as, you know, many cracks in the streets. So what we do is we try to preserve the streets by slurry sealing them for... It'll keep them fresh for another five, 10 years. So we are looking at all of them. I'll work with the Councilmen on your streets as well. Thank you.
Let's give them a hand, because we have a number presenters.
Thank you.
Thank you so much again. Appreciate it. Before we go any further, I think it's only appropriate that we give honor where honors due. You wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the Hollywood Park Casino opening their doors for us and embracing us with refreshments. Please help me recognize the General Manager, Devin Kumar, for all the efforts he's done and his staff. Thank you so much. The other area I want to address that is not on your agenda, but is a current concern. I mentioned to you regarding the recent homicide on Van Ness. There also has been a number of questions or comments raised to me regarding daytime burglaries, as well as invasion of vehicles because you didn't lock your car doors, they decide to come in. And particularly if you're in Century Heights and Inglewood Knowles, that is an area of concern, as well as the calls and emails I was getting about having police officer presence on Van Ness. Are you feeling me? Am I there? So that being said, I've added another item on the agenda, which is why I'm moving the meeting quite rapidly, because I have not one, but I have two captains from the Inglewood Police Department and a number of officers to join them. Please help me recognize Ed Ryden and Captain Mark Freed. If you'll please join me. These are questions, concerns you raised. Now, instead of you hearing lip service from the Councilman, let's do the... Let's listen to the captains that enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Can you hear me okay? Okay. The Councilman said, "I am Captain Ed Ryden. I run the patrol division. I'm responsible for commanding over 100 employees." How's that? I'll discuss the traffic situation. Captain Mark Freed here will discuss the criminal portion of it through the Detective Bureau aspect. But first, before we start, I'd like to, you know, on behalf of IPD, offer our sinners condolences and thoughts and prayers with Miss Sonya Lee and her family. It's very important to us and crucial. Can you hear me now? All right. Traffic is near and dear to me. I spent 15 years in the traffic division, so I understand the issues and the concerns that are raised throughout the community. And much credit to your voices being raised regarding Van Ness and getting that changed back so that center lane isn't used as a passing lane. We understand that as well, so much credit to those that were involved in that. As far as our enforcement efforts, I brought some of our outstanding motor crew that are out here patrolling the traffic enforcement throughout the city. On average, they write, you know, over 500 tickets a month, and these are directly correlated to moving violations, which are primary collision factors, so much credit to them. They're also, with those primary collision factors, there's a direct correlation with traffic collisions that occur throughout the city. When they're out there riding, the visibility, our traffic collisions go down. And over the past month, we have had a 15% decrease in our traffic collisions, most of concerned in the injury traffic collisions. Some of the programs, we don't know what Inglewood PD's doing. We're on the forefront of a couple novel ideas that we're going to implement. First, like the Councilman said, you know, we share a lot of borders right down there on Van Ness. We recognize that the car clipping issue... How many know that there's a car clipping issue?
Yes.
It's not the days in the past where, you know, they're cruising on the street, that's it. These car clippers are just reckless drivers. That's the bottom line. And we have in the past combined efforts with the Higher Patrol, Hawthorne, our neighboring agencies, to go out there and confront them. They'll roll 200, 300, 400 deep. They're posted up on social media, you know, blatantly saying they're going to take down Crenshaw Boulevard. We're not letting that happen, ever. When we go out there, the problem is, you know, they're wise to a lot of shift schedules and everything else. They won't get started until about 3:00 in the morning, and they travel from city to city, causing havoc, deaths, and destruction. We are on the forefront of having a task force go out there and actually deal with them head-on with multiple agencies involved. On another front, when we're dealing with reckless drivers, there's a couple of programs out there for Alive at 25. Most of our reckless drivers are underage, under 25, and our goal is to actually keep them alive so they can actually see 25. One of the things that we were working on is implementing a court-mandated program. So when we have these reckless drivers, we have these speedies that they have to actually go through a court-mandated class, kind of like driver's training, but it's more geared towards reckless driving, showing the statistics and what we could do to improve and prolong their lives and the dangerous behaviors while they're driving. So that's on the agenda. We do have a few things going on with the OTS Grant, which provides speed enforcement, DUI checkpoints, but not only DUI, but driver's license checkpoints. We're mainly concerned with those drivers out there that are driving on a suspended license. They prove in that, you know, driving is a privilege, it's not a right, and they've had that privilege revoked, and most of our fatalities or injury collisions involve someone that's on a suspended license. So we do have enforcement efforts to combat that type of driving and make sure that we impound those vehicles. Another program that I'm personally working on is kind of like a We-Tip program, but it's an IPD reckless driving tip program. This is where most of us observe reckless driving throughout the city, and by the time we get out there, we don't see it or they're gone. This is a form where you can actually post a tip with a plate and the behavior that was seen. We'll actually send them a letter with, "Hey, your driving's been observed in a reckless manner," and provide safety and tools to address their driving. A lot of times, you know, as well as I do, that, you know, when parents receive this because their kids are out reckless driving in their car, that kind of changes the momentum on what goes on. So that's one of the projects that we're working on. I think it's... It'll be impactful, and we'll have that up and running shortly. I won't delay because I know that we have... Want to get to Captain Mark Freed, but I will stay around throughout the meeting, as well as after the meeting, to address any concerns or traffic-related matters or anything of that nature, to talk about those, okay?
Thank you. Now, we're going to have Captain Freed.
How long do I have, Councilman?
Two minutes.
Now, you've got three. Okay. Now, I'm a big mouth, and I like to talk, and he always gives me very little time, so I end up rushing through this, and I will be here at the end of the event, too. I am not soft-spoken or shy, so I will get through this as quick as I can, but I'm going to stay afterwards, and I'll answer any of your questions. And of course, the Councilman's assistant always knows how to get a hold of me via email. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Captain Mark Freed from the Police Department. I'm the commanding officer of the Detective Bureau. Any crime reports in the city that are written and are assigned to detectives, those detectives ultimately work for me. So they follow up. My staff and I spend a considerable amount of time worrying about crime in this district. Every single day, we read and review crime reports from your neighborhood, trying to figure out how we find the people that did it and put them in jail. That's what we do. In your neighborhood, I pulled some crime statistics in the last 30 days. Property crime in this district is down 21% overall. That's up-to-date as of 6:00 this evening. That was the data I had. That's... Those are excellent numbers, by the way. You don't have to believe me. Some people look at me and say, "That's not the truth. You're not telling us the truth." Go to crimemapping.org. All of our information is there for you. You can look at it anytime, day or night. It's free. crimemapping.org. You can look at Inglewood's crime. You could look at LA's crime. You could look what's going on around us. You click on the little bubbles. It'll tell you. You can add them up yourself. It'll give you this data. Now, I have access to some data you don't have, but that's just more. You're going to get the same numbers I'm going to get. You might have to get your pen out or your calculator and sort of subtract and add. Property crime is burglary, arson, theft of all kinds, and so those numbers are down 21% in this district in the last 30 days to the 30 days previous to that. Residential burglary seems to be a real issue, and it's a real issue for all law enforcement agencies in the South Bay. I can say this about the City of Los Angeles. They have a lot more problems east of Van Ness than we do west. We're proud of that, that we have a lot less crime. If you go look, you'll see a lot of bubbles on the east side of Van Ness, not so much on the west side of Van Ness. And that's the dividing line between the City of Los Angeles and the City of Inglewood. So we spent... We're very proud of that. But one, one burglary is one too many, as far as we're concerned. I think you feel the exact same way. What's going on right now with the residential burglaries we're seeing is knock-knock. You've read this, seen it on TV? Okay. So we used to give conflicting advice about knock-knock burglaries. Essentially, most burglaries happen in the daytime. If you're not home, the burglar or the burglary crew will drive up, they'll park. Sometimes they're dressed nice. Usually, they're dressed nice. They figured out if they look good, people won't call the police, right? So they're dressed nicely, they walk up to the door, they knock on the door, and they wait to see if anybody answers. What happens when they don't answer? But a lot of folks are in the house. They don't answer the door. They think somebody's selling them something, or they don't want to talk to somebody. I always tell folks, if somebody knocks at your door, let them know you're inside. Burglars don't want to break in while you're there. Burglars are not robbers. They're burglars. They want to take your stuff when you're not around. It's easier. A property crime is much less serious offense in the eyes of the law. There's no danger of them hurting you. They don't want to go to prison. If you rob somebody, you could do nine years in prison. If you commit a burglary in the state of California, the crime is... The legislature considers it a much lesser offense, so they don't go to prison, okay? Unless they commit many burglaries. So the reality is, they don't want you to see you. They want to go kick in the front door, or they'll go around the back, and they'll just find a window or a sliding door that's unlocked. So when you're not home during the day, leave a radio on inside, leave some music going. They'll find another house. They'll move on down the block. I like cameras. I like alarms. I have an alarm and cameras at my own home. It's a preventative measure. It's not going to stop a burglary. It's not going to stop it, but the burglar walks up to your house and he decides, "Am I going to do that house, or I'm going to go to the one that doesn't have an alarm or sign or a camera?" Even if you just buy an alarm sign, right? It's a preventative measure. Keep your bushes cut down, and if you see something, you've got to say something. I tell folks all the time, there's a common denominator. Many, many neighbors and many, many people saw the suspects when they came down the block, or maybe they knocked on your door, and they didn't expect you to be there, but they went three houses down and burglarized. Call us, okay? We're professionals. We're going to come out. You don't have to call 911. Maybe you're suspicious about somebody. You call the non-emergency line. You give the dispatchers the information. "Hey, I live on the street. I don't recognize these folks. They've come. They knocked on the door, then they moved on down the block. Could you send somebody out to check on them? We're going to come out. We're going to talk to them. Let's say we catch them down the street. Let's say there's two guys in the car, and they haven't committed a crime." The police officers that get out there, they're going to talk to them, right? We're going to get their identification. We're going to get their names, and maybe they go over to LA instead of burglarizing in Inglewood because they know we've got their names. We're going to put that information in a machine, and if we have a burglary, the detectives are going to be... They'll go back and look at that and say, "Hey, they were in the neighborhood during that... When that crime was committed." We're going to do it respectfully and professionally because that's what we do. But we're going to let people know that we're paying attention to what's going on. So I'll stay after the meeting. I know my time's up. I'll answer any questions, and like I said, go to crimemapping.org if you have any questions. You can see what's going on in your neighborhood. Thank you.
One or two questions. One or two questions. We need a mic. We need a mic. We need a mic. Do you need a mic? Do you need a mic? One or two questions, one, two, three, that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
My question would be, I went to the Inglewood Police Department because I had, someone had stole my ID.
Your ID.
And when I got there, filled out the form.
Yes.
Then they told me to go back home because they needed me to give them a credit report, and I refused to do so because I figured all of my information was on a credit. They told me that twice.
Why don't I see you afterwards? I'm going to give you my business card, okay? And then you can, we'll talk directly, okay?
Okay.
No. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I have just a real simple question. What is the non-emergency phone number?
That's a, that is a real simple question. 8771, 310-412-8771.
Slower, slower.
See, I told you, don't do slow. That is the same communication center where the 911 calls go. Those are, police dispatchers will answer that when you call in. If it's an emergency, if you see a crime in progress, you call 911. If you see something suspicious, you call the non-emergency line. When in doubt, call 911. If you don't know what to do, just call 911, okay? We know how to handle it.
Yeah, last question right there.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Yes, is there an update about carjacking attempt in Inglewood? There was something about someone leaving a funeral at the Inglewood Cemetery, and someone, three guys tried to, were trying to open up the doors to carjack their car near Manchester and Prairie.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the case. I read almost all the crime reports, I would know if there was a carjacking like that. There was an arrest on May 6th. There was a burglary crew up on 78th Street. Now, that's not Councilman Franklin's district, but it was up in District 1, Councilman Dodson's district. They were, Inglewood Police got a radio call up there. We got up there pretty fast, and we arrested five suspects. So that got out pretty quick. I'm not surprised to say crime this week is down from Saturday. We found a lot of stolen property in the car. Now, it's an active case, so I'm not going to go into too many more details, but suffice to say, we love to catch these guys committing crimes with the property. We get to put them in prison for that. But that's the only case I'm familiar with up in the last week. I'm sorry. Yeah, I don't think there was a carjacking.
Okay, last question or comment, Mr. Henry Brown.
Yes, sir.
Councilman, I just have a request. Crenshaw Boulevard from Century to Imperial has turned into like a drag race. In the past, we used to have patrolmen who would monitor on 104th or 110th. What can we do to get those officers, especially back out there during the peak hours in the morning, where, you know, you could walk, kids could get hurt and all, and you see tremendous accidents in our neighborhood and all? And I pull out a many victims out of people speeding up and down Crenshaw, trying to get from Century to Imperial Highway.
Your request has been heard. My motors are back here, they know what to do now. So we'll get back out there, thank you.
Let's give him a hand if you would, please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Now, I do want to stress, these are captains. Captains have the authority to delegate and assign patrol. So when you, they're going to stay here, so if you have some bona fide, genuine questions for the benefit of you and the community, please take the time to visit with him. This was in addition to our regular town hall meeting information, and I want to make sure, because it was pertinent to you, that you raised these issues of concern, that you now take advantage of the powers to be that have the people that can able to make the changes, deploy the officers out there at the time of the day, the day of the week, and the hour of the day, so we can address those concerns. Can you do that? Will you do that? Let's give him another hand if you would, please. I want to take this time and opportunity also to recognize our city manager, Mr. Artie Fields, who joined us here this evening, and his lovely assistant, Tanisha Johnson. Thank you very much for your efforts. We have a number of volunteer commissioners that have chosen to give of their personal time and energy for your benefit. For the Aviation Commission, I see Joan Richardson. Joan, please stand and be recognized. For the Civil Service Board of Review, is it Chibi Walton here? Chibi? She hasn't come yet. For the Construction Appeals Board, W.G. Howard Jr., is he here yet? Not here yet. For the Housing Advisory Board, Cheryl McClellan. There's Cheryl, thank you. Human Affairs Commission, Dorothy Cole. Where's Dorothy? There she is, right up front. Parks and Recreation Commissioner and the Chairman, Willie Brown, Willie Agee. Willie Agee. All right, Parking and Traffic Commission, Barbara Brooks. These are District 4 representatives. Planning and Zoning Board, Terrell Coleman, in the back. So I think I got everyone as of now, so if I missed anyone, and you're one of the commissioners and board members assigned and appointed by this council, please let us know. The next item, we're now back on the agenda, so you see I'm moving it fast. The next item has to do with Hollywood Park Development. Since I've been on the council since 2003, I will say 2004 is when Hollywood Park became the limelight, 2005 is when we had a multitude of discussions and dialogues, and between 2008 and 2009, we had 11 public hearings to move the 238 acre project forward. Since that time, we've recently had the expansion of the 60 acres by Stan Kronke, who now is the owner of the NFL Rams, to have a private, private partnership. This evening, however, I want to concentrate, and you've asked for me to concentrate, what about the 238 acres that originally is part of the plan? And so tonight, we're going to have that discussion and presentation. But before I invite the gentleman up, they're in your, in your handouts. There is a flyer I provided you that's called the LA Stadium and Entertainment District at Hollywood Park. That is the meeting you want to go to for Saturday, June 3rd, to talk about the stadium. So if you have any issues and concerns regarding the stadium development, you need to go to that meeting. But in this meeting, we're here to talk about the 238 acres, what was the premier development, and we almost lost them because there was a major concern that Walmart was going to come to Inglewood. You voters said, no, we want a bigger, better deal. And let me invite you to the bigger and better deal, Mr. Gerald McCullum II, from Wilson Meany and Solomon. Wilson and Meany now, thank you.
All right, all right. Make sure we got the right one. Okay.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me out, Councilman Franklin. I always appreciate these meetings, especially again, we can talk about really kind of the future development that's kind of underway here at Hollywood Park. Today, I'm going to talk about everything else outside of the stadium, as the councilman spoke earlier about, is what about the rest of the acres? And I would just, slight correction, it's 298 acres now, because it's the adjoining 60 acres that are also a part of it. The original 238 acres. And so the project has changed a little bit from that original entitlement where we first approached you back in 2005, 2006. So this has been a long journey to get to this point, but we have been working over the last couple of months, now that the stadium and the entertainment district is underway, what you see out there is basically the stadium construction and the small entertainment venue under construction. But the rest of the project is what we're now focusing on, and we'll go a little bit through that now. As you're aware now, the project is now a total of 298 acres, and this is just kind of an aerial that shows the entire site minus four acres that is currently owned by the city, and also the parcel in which we sit right now, which is the casino, which is owned by a separate entity under Wilson Meany and Stockbridge Properties. Next slide. So we have a unique opportunity with basically almost 300 acres. Disneyland, the entire properties of Disneyland fit on this site. Staples Center fits on only a small portion of the site. That's how big this opportunity is, and so we take this extremely serious. Most people didn't realize, after living here for many years, that that piece of property was that big, primarily because you only saw the parking lots from the street up to the stadium wall. And then when all that came down, everybody was amazed that there was a racetrack, 1,700 horses housed on site, an equine hospital in the back, 5,000 residents lived during high season on the site, and a practice track in the back. And so when you take all that down, what you see is now what's before you at this point. So, next slide. We plan to basically take this and recreate a brand new district, a brand new village, if you will. And so this will be a lot of the things that we spoke of back in 2005, 2006, 2007, as you're a part of those community meetings that ultimately came up with the land plan. Next slide. This will be the premier sports and entertainment district in the country. We're not shy about what we're saying, we plan for this to be the premier sports and entertainment district in the, in the country. A glimpse of that is just what you saw in the redevelopment of the casino. They went completely high-end, and expect the rest of the property to be completely high-end. Next slide. Unique, contemporary, cohesive design. One of the things that we've been working very heavily with is that, not to make this look like it just dropped out of nowhere, but that actually is a part of the Southern California landscape and culture. Here in Inglewood, you have the best microclimate, there's only eight in the world, it's called a bioclimate, and we plan to take advantage of that. It is absolutely lovely to be outside here in the city of Inglewood, and so our designs will actually incorporate a lot of outside activity that will, you know, so there won't be any kind of closed-in-mall type of situation here. It'll be similar to if you went to Century City or to The Grove, in terms of the way it will be interacting with you as a patron. Next slide. This is what we're now entitled for, after the initiative, after the expansion behind the original project, we're now at 298 acres. We are building a 70,000 to 80,000-seat stadium that can expand up to 100,000 people for things like Super Bowl, which is coming to Inglewood in 2021. A performance art venue, about 6,000 seats, that's also in construction at the same time. And that will exist under the same roof that the stadium is, and kind of one entire complex onto itself. 2,500 residents will be built over a period of time. We are working now on the first 400 luxury apartments that will be in the retail center. Similar to if you went downtown, those luxury apartments will be inside of the retail center. 890,000 square feet of retail. We are also now underway with 550,000 square feet of planning for retail. We plan for that to open right around the same time as the stadium, and so it's a lot of activity kind of going on while they're out there constructing. We are now working with architects to come up with a new plan for the new retail center, and so that will, again, be targeted for the 2019, 2020 opening season of the stadium. 790,000 square feet of office. This is, to me, actually, the real jewel in the crown of what's in the development here, because once the games are gone and everything settles back down, you'll have 790 square feet of grade A office. That'll be similar to what's over in Playa Vista. It'll be some of the nicest office space in Los Angeles County that will be built. And right now, we have two large tenants pursuing us relatively heavily to be housed there. And so right now, we have hired Gensler Architects, the premier architects here in Los Angeles, to actually start those planning on those offices. 300-room hotel, that's a big discussion. We've done the hotel studies, we'll be out marketing that relatively soon. That plans to be a boutique hotel, either one or two boutique hotels on site, and that would be obviously to service actually all the entertainment and become part of the destination centers here from people coming to the airport. And then finally, the 25 acres of park space. We plan to actually open, on opening day, Lake Park and part of Arroyo Park. And so the lake, the retail center, the stadium, we plan, all things considered, to open on opening day. Now, I say all things considered because we had 32 days of rain, which equates to 104 days of construction, and so our guys are trying the best to kind of keep up with that schedule. Next slide. Again, that Southern California expression is outdoors. Palm trees, Neil Air and Associates is doing the landscaping, they're designing the Great Park in Orange County. If you've gone to the Science Museum outside of that whole whale exhibit, they've done that whole stream and natural Arroyo portions of that. So there's some of the premier landscape architects that are actually working on the site now. Next slide. Indoor-outdoor environment, next slide. And then outdoor events place. There is a lot of activity planned for the retail center itself. There's a number of plazas that will be located within the retail center. We're designing the plaza, the retail center, so that it meets a number of different objectives outside of just shopping. We have an entertainment district that will be anchored by a movie theater. We have a food district that will be anchored by a market hall. And if you've ever been to San Francisco, to the Ferry Building, has anybody ever been to the Ferry Building in San Francisco? That's our project. That's the premier market hall in the country. Everyone from Eat Eataly LA to you name it, Todd English or whatever, has copied the Ferry Building, not too much success, including Santa Monica Third Street Promenade. We do that excellently. That will be one of the anchors in our food hall. That will also give opportunities for small, local folks to get involved and rent a space and be in there to explain, to display what they're able to do from a food perspective. We did that in San Francisco extremely successfully. Local businesses like Cowgirl Creamery and Taylor's Refresh, all those have gone basically now as to national companies, just from their exposure in the market hall. We're also going to do a fashion hall, which will also give local and entrepreneurial folks to display original fashions that they're designing and for sale for the public. And so the idea is to be able to bring a multitude of different types of approaches to the retail center, so that it actually appeals to a broader audience. Again, the retail center is designed to be a regional destination center that will draw from multiple counties throughout the district. Next page. Global stage, this again, we plan for this to be the premier global stage. When you come into LA, you will not miss this site. It will rank among everything from the Getty Museum to Walt Disney Hall, it will be right here in the city of Inglewood. Next, next page. This is basically where the retail center is going to be. For those of you that may not recall from the previous meetings, we are still going to locate the retail center on the corner of Century and Prairie, and then it will come kind of from a diagonal in towards the middle of the site, towards the stadium. And so at the very corner, it will be anchored there by our fashion hall, and then going all the way towards the lake edge will be a large, open plaza that will be anchored by the food hall. Next page. And so this kind of was a rendering we had out for a while ago. That's, pretty much will be the same, where the hotel will look into the plaza, some of the sports and entertainment related retail will look into the plaza, the offices are in the background looking onto the stadium. Next page. And this is kind of a view looking from the sports and entertainment, basically where the team stores will be. There'll be two teams, we have two teams, Chargers and Rams, and they'll be located right along from the stadium, looking into the northern edge of the lake. Next page. And this kind of gives you an idea of just basically our merchandising plan. Again, entertainment district housed by pretty much movie theater, fashion hall and fashion district housed by a number of different fashion anchors, but also that entrepreneurial experience as well. The food hall is very northern end, towards the lake end of it, and that kind of gives you an idea of exactly how we plan to merchandise it. Next page. This is sort of like one of the rough drafts of our first renderings of the architectural schematic plans. Again, this is kind of going on a number of different versions on that. There will be a major parking garage, similar to if you've ever been to The Grove or The Americana, where that feeds everything into the retail center. You'll come out that parking garage, directly ahead of you will be the movie theaters, and then you can go up. Hollywood Way is what we're calling it to this point, that would then connect you into the Lake Park District. And that's our Lake Park precinct. That'll give you an overview of basically what we're working on now, again, trying to get that open for the 2019, 2020 football season. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you.
My, my, my. I get him here, and now you just want to beat him with all these questions. Can I first get my question in first? Would you share with us if there's any local hiring involved?
Yes, currently on the site, you know, right now, we have a development agreement with the city. We have a 30% local hire and a 35% post-construction hire for the sports and entertainment district. Right now, if you go to that meeting on June 3rd that the councilman referenced, they'll also talk about the next upcoming both subcontractor and jobs opportunities. We're also working with the South Bay Web, so for people that have never had a job before and want to get into the unions, there are pre-apprentice programs at the South Bay Web, and that we have a number of people in classes now kind of going through that to get into the pre-apprentice program, to eventually become apprentices and to try to work on the site. I always tell people, get into it, because there's so much construction activity throughout Los Angeles County, that this just leaves you to multiple opportunities, both with Metro, from downtown, the airport, and also to us as well.
Okay, now we will take a couple of questions. No more hands, those three that are up. You see them, Ashley? We'll go from the lady in the blue blouse, and then next to her, and then the young lady over there.
Yes, for the entry to the...
Use the mic, please.
For the entry to this facility, this site, is it going to be Prairie and Century, or is it going to include that street in between the Forum and this facility, which is Penn K? I think it's Penn K or 80th Street.
Yes. So the question was, is there going to be one entrance off of Prairie into the site? There's actually going to be a number of different entrances actually into the site. We're going to build a number of different major streets in and that would traverse the site to take you from one district to the next. So just about every street will have a major entrance into the site.
My question, I'm sorry, can I do a follow-up, please? My question is because there's residential property over there, and I just wondered if that was going to be used as an entry. That street is called Penn K, or it might be 90th Street.
Yeah, off of Penn K, right across from the Forum. There are entrances over to that area, but when you get closer over towards the Renaissance and Briarwood areas, there are no entrances on that street, except for the entrances that we wanted to build specially for, we're going to address the crash gate issues for the Renaissance property, so we're going to build an entrance nexus for them.
So before you comment, so staying with the traffic, there's only three major boulevards for them to come out on or go into, so it's Penn K Drive, Prairie, and Century. But the key is, how many entrances ingress and egress is going to be there? And so, at the request of the Renaissance, they actually wanted a roadway that would lead up to their crash gate, so then that way, they could finish their development, and then they will have a separate exit for them to be able to go in and out of that development as well. Question or comment?
Question. You mentioned food hall, and my question is, will the food hall consist of fast-food places, or will you have a healthy food supermarket, such as Trader Joe's or Sprouts?
Fast food is not on our agenda here at this property.
Okay, good, good.
Now, I do make one exception to that. We probably will have like a Starbucks-type of place, you know, some places like that, but there won't be like, you know, fast-food type of thing. This is all sit-down.
Will there be a supermarket, such as?
We are, a grocery store. We are pursuing a supermarket, but...
A healthy one.
Well, we're pursuing a supermarket.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So just be mindful, we can only ask if they're willing to relocate. I have been trying to get Trader Joe's in Inglewood for years, and they've only whet their appetite downtown. They may now buy into the new development, but I couldn't get them on Imperial and Crenshaw, just so you know. Sprouts was another one. Whole Foods was another one. They all have pushed back. Now, with this massive development, and with all of the amount of, they based where they're going to go upon your spending power. So if you've got the money, and you can patronize them and sustain them, then in turn, they will weigh in on having this as a permanent location. Final question or comment, young lady right there.
Hello. It's, I'm pleased to hear all the progress being made. However, are there businesses already committed to this site? And if so, can you name three?
Yes, there are businesses, but I can't name them because of this disclosure agreements that we currently have with them.
With the anchor stores?
With the anchor stores, just about every store at this point, yeah.
When might that be discovered?
There'll be a particular time in which we'll reveal everything all at one time, but it's, with retailing, it's actually complicated. If you want a certain store, they have to know that other stores are with them, and so it's sort of like a, you know, yeah, so if you sign one, they want to make sure before they commit and make a public announcement that you've got these other two. And so it's kind of a hodgepodge that you have to put together before you can actually announce them, because if you don't get the others, then they'll reconsider their leases. So that's what makes this a little bit more complicated. Like, for example, I have eight offers in to us for movie theaters, but I can't announce any of the eight. But you could figure out who's the eight. There's only eight in the country. So, okay, thanks.
And I just want to expand on that comment, because I deal with this on a regular basis for me, on behalf of your council, trying to bring in retail. The first thing comes out of the prospective retailer, who else is there and who wants to come? Because they're very sensitive about competition, or they, over the years, they've had ill-will with a certain tenant or retailer, and they said, as long as they're there, I won't come. And we have those specific issues, but we don't have control of them. All we can do is say, here's the opportunity. So I want to thank Gerard McCullum for coming. Let's give him a hand, if you would, please. Thank you. I'm trying to stay on schedule, but as you see that your energy and your series of questions, you are whetting your appetite. My goal is that I give you enough ammunition that you will share this knowledge and information with others. Will you do that?
Yes.
All right. Now, let's move on to our next presenter, because we actually have a waste hauler that we have a multi-year contract with that is currently working on what we call Operation Clean Sweep. An operation clean sweep, but twice a year, is when we ask for you to put all your bulky items that doesn't weigh more than 60 pounds in four feet by six feet, or four feet by five feet, and they will pick up on your regular, there's a special trash day for pickup. And I've provided that information for you, but also, we're going to find out, what do you know that goes in what trash can? The test is on. Please help me recognize Ms. Dawn Harris from Republic Services.
Thank you, Councilman, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Dawn Harris. I'm from Republic Services, and we take care of your waste and recycling. And I wanted to give you this evening just a little bit of information on some upcoming events and a current event, and then wanted to test your knowledge about recycling. So the first thing I wanted to cover, and thank you, Councilman, for bringing some of the detail to Operation Clean Sweep. This will be our third Saturday working. Just so you know, it's not a competition, but the first Saturday, we picked up 39.7 tons. So those were the people who have Monday Service Day. Their clean sweep was April 29th. The second Saturday, which was last week, it was 42 tons that we picked up. So if your service day is Wednesday, we will be out to see you on this Saturday, the 13th. So let's just see if you have more than tons than the previous weeks. We'll make sure that we pick up furniture, appliances, garbage. The only thing that we ask is that you do not put any hazardous materials, no paint, oil, chemicals, or batteries, and certainly no fireplace ashes or barbecue coals that need to be extinguished. Also, I'm asked to remind you, please don't place your items out prior to Friday, because if the inspectors go by, there's a possibility that you might, you would be cited. So, once again, if your service day is Wednesday, we'll see you this Saturday for pickup. You can put just about anything out at the curb. Someone asked me earlier about a pool table or a foosball table or something. We can take that, no problem. If you have a Thursday pickup, we'll see you next weekend, and Friday pickup will be the last Saturday in May. The second thing I wanted to give you an update on is an upcoming event. It's a shred and e-waste event. It's a drive-through drop-off, and it's coming on Saturday, June 24th.
You have the flyer. Is there any handout?
Way ahead of me. Thank you. Just want to make sure that you are aware, you will hear some radio announcements advertising this, but we welcome your participation here. The thing to note is that it's open to Inglewood residents only. We'll be taking your documents there that you need shredded. We want to have special attention paid to you when you need to have things shredded and disposed of, so that you are not a victim of identity theft. We'll be there with two trucks going, so whatever you've got, bring it on down, and we'll be happy to take care of that for you. Okay? And...
It's showtime.
Showtime. Here's the time where we ask you a couple of questions about recycling. The idea behind this is to get you aware of, one, what we're teaching the kids in school about recycling, and, two, to make you realize that this is something important to do, and it can be fun to remember. So we'll get a couple of residents to come up and spin the wheel, and we'll ask you a question, and if you can have the right answer, then we'll be happy to give you a prize of your choice here. Okay, firsthand, oh, you can do the next one.
Sure. Okay, so you give it a spin, and then I will ask you the question on the corresponding
card. Your question is, recycled plastic bottles can be made into other products. What is one of the other products?
Trash cans?
Speak loudly and clearly into the mic.
Pasta bags, trash cans.
She says, plastic cans, trash cans. Those are all good answers, so if you want, you can please take your choice here.
Next. If you want to take, we have four more. If you want to go to all, four more, go to all.
Glass can go from recycling bin to the supermarket shelf in how many days?
Say that again? Wait, wait, wait.
Glass can go from your recycling bin to the supermarket shelf in how many days?
30 days?
30 days is the answer? Hey, all right. Yes. Thank you. Next. Once an aluminum can is recycled, it will be part of a new can within how many weeks? You've got all winners tonight. And here are some other prizes here that you can choose from as well. Thank you. Next. Paper waste makes up what percentage of the total material filling up landfills? Little bit higher. Perfect answer. 35%. 35% is paper waste makes up 35% of the total material filling up the landfills. Next. Okay. The term e-waste is applied to what consumer equipment that is no longer wanted? E-waste. Electronic. Come on over and choose your prize.
Thank you. All right, and the finale.
Drum roll, brrr. For a seven-piece barbecue apron and utensil set. Come on down. You got it. Okay, you ready? Out of 10 plastic bottles, how many will end up at the dump? Well, that was a perfect answer. Eight. Eight of 10. So we want to thank you for playing the spin-to-win game. We appreciate all of the participants, and we want you to know that we appreciate you for your efforts, and please make sure that you recycle. If you need additional recycling containers, that's the blue one, please call our office, Once again, 800-299-4898, if you need additional recycling containers. Please, if you need to have extra garbage picked up, arrange that. Don't put it in your recycle bin, okay? Thank you.
Give her a hand, please. Thank you. Thank you. I know you have questions, but I really have to move on, because I have to respect the other presenters that are here as well. But there is one other item I want to share with you that she didn't provide you. And how many of you have drove down the block, not even your block, and all of a sudden, you see, meh, what's this couch in front of that house? It's been there forever. And why don't they pick it up? Because no one will call. No one will call. I can't tell you how many times you will call me to tell me about your neighbor that left the sofa that's been there for the last two weeks in the rain. So I'm asking you, as a community of unity, the number that she just gave you is the number that will pick up the bulk special item pickup for abandoned items. And again, it does not have to be in front of your house, does not have to be on your block. But if we want our community to look clean, the best we can, let's get it off the streets. But again, the number is 1-800-299-4898. Again, let's give her a hand, if you would, please. Okay, now, we've had the experience of dealing with the, what's my theme? Progress in the city. And the second part of the theme is healthy choices. So yours truly had the experience of unexpectedly becoming a caregiver, having no idea what is involved, found out that I was the power of attorney for someone's health, and all of a sudden, I get a phone call saying, you are up, and you need to now rise to the occasion and help your friend, because my friend, 86 years young, who just passed away, that I had to be with him from August of last year to March of this year. And I did not want any of you to witness the experience that I went through with no knowledge. And what did I tell you about knowledge? With knowledge, there is what? Power. So I actually, the city of Inglewood, partnered with NAACP and the USC Alzheimer's Disease Research Center on March 4th, Saturday, where we actually had a special session at the Inglewood Main Library, and I was able to give my testimony about what I'm going through at that time, not knowing that my friends were going to pass away 14 days later. Just didn't know. But what I did learn, that you as a caregiver, or you may have a loved one, a friend of the family, or someone you may know that says they need help. My friend suffered dementia, which is called memory loss. I currently am dealing with, what am I dealing with? Memory, huh? Dealing with memory. We call it a senior moment, huh? But I want to bring some experts up here, because, again, I want to thank Tara Rose, who was very instrumental on sharing with me the information of going to bribe me experts to talk to us regarding the early stages of memory loss and Alzheimer's and dementia. Please help me recognize... Please help me recognize Dr. Freddie Siegel Gagin from the USC dermatologist. Please help me recognize her from the research center. Thank you very much, come right this way.
Thank you so much for having me. Kind of coming home because my first job in medicine was here at Centinela Hospital. So that was almost forty years ago. So it's sort of nice to be back. There is a PowerPoint if you want to pull it up. You don't have it? I do, but I thought, they told me they had uploaded it, so hold on.
So while we're waiting on her to get the information, go to your handouts. Remember, I tried to move this thing forward. Go to the handouts. And you're going to see the USC Memory and Aging Center. You're also going to see the Key School of Medicine of USC. Pull all those things out because that will coincide with their presentation. Thank you.
I can test my memory and try to do it without. So first off, let me say that I work for you and I want to thank you for paying your taxes. Because I work as a director of a state-funded Alzheimer's Research Center affiliated with USC located at Rancho Los Amigos Hospital, part of the county hospital system. And this is one of ten centers funded by the State of California through your tax dollars that were created in nineteen eighty-five to improve diagnosis and care and treatment for people with dementing disorders throughout the state of California. So anybody in California, from San Diego to San Francisco, is usually within an hour to an hour and a half's drive of a center with excellence. So we have that wonderful resource here. And I also work for use of the federal government because I work as part of the USC Alzheimer's Disease Research Center, which is funded by the National Institutes of Health, which on Friday got another four hundred million dollars for Alzheimer's disease, which is good news. But Alzheimer's is funded at about a tenth of the cost of cancer or heart disease. So while it is the sixth leading cause of death in this country, it is very underfunded. And so we are very happy to have additional funding coming our way so we can try to improve care and treatment for individuals with Alzheimer's disease. So first, let me point out, memory loss is not a normal part of aging. No. Senior moments, yes. Memory loss, no. So just like chest pain is not normal, just like losing your eyesight is not normal, just like having shortness of breath is not normal, memory loss is a symptom of an underlying problem. And so if you're experiencing or you know somebody who's experienced memory loss, that is, they cannot remember what they told you a minute ago. They cannot remember where they parked their car repeatedly. They cannot remember how to find their way home. Those things are not normal. They cannot remember how to take their medication. That warrants going to the doctor and having an evaluation, okay? Memory loss is not normal. And if someone tells you, "Well, what do you expect, you're X years old?" I would say, "I expect to be functioning well at eighty or ninety or whatever, and I don't think you should ignore me and pay attention to me." Okay? When we're talking about these conditions, we need to make sure we're talking about in the terminology we understand. So memory loss, in medical terms, is called amnesia, okay? Amnesia happens when you knock your head in a football game. If you have a lot of them, then it leads to dementia. But memory loss itself is not only amnesia, amnesia is memory loss, that's not dementia, okay? Amnesia happens when you have antestesiology for surgery, because you don't remember the surgery, right? But that's not dementia, that is amnesia. Dementia is memory loss and other thinking problems. Problems balancing the checkbook, problems learning how to operate the microwave, problems learning how to work a new car, other problems, problems paying your taxes, that is affecting your function. So memory loss is more, is a part of dementia, but dementia is more than memory loss, okay? And then, did you go ahead? Go back. Then there is Alzheimer's disease. You've all heard of Alzheimer's disease, okay? It's not old-timers' disease, it's Alzheimer's disease. Alzheimer was a physician over a hundred years ago who described a woman who was fifty-six years old, that was old at that time, who was experiencing changes in her memory and her thinking and her behavior, okay? And when he looked at her brain when she died, he described the changes that we now call Alzheimer's disease. Alzheimer's disease is a kind of dementia, it's a form of dementia, but there are other forms of dementia, just like there are lots of kinds of cancer. So dementia includes Alzheimer's, maybe more than Alzheimer's. So if someone says you have dementia, what kind of dementia? Alzheimer's is the most common kind in older people. Sixty percent of dementias in older people are Alzheimer's. That means forty percent are other things, okay? So Alzheimer's disease, the most common dementia amongst older adults, but not the only cause, due to changes in the brain that we call tangled and plaques. These are proteins that develop in the brain of all of us, but as we age, in some of us, they accumulate more than usual, okay? And we now know that these abnormal proteins called amyloid beta and tau are the underlying cause, just like cholesterol plaques are the underlying cause of heart disease. Amyloid beta plaques and tau tangles are the underlying cause of Alzheimer's disease. And there are ways we can see them in the brain now in research that are moving out into clinical practice. But we don't yet have ways to test for them in a really good way. So a couple sobering facts. Five and a half million Americans have Alzheimer's disease, the majority of these are women. Aging is a women's issue and Alzheimer's disease affects women more than men. Three point two million women have Alzheimer's disease. One in three Americans have a family member affected by Alzheimer's disease. How many of here know someone with Alzheimer's disease? So look to your right and look to your left, because one in three, okay? You may not know you have it, okay? The other sobering fact is that African-Americans are two to three times more likely to develop Alzheimer's disease. African-Americans are at higher risk for Alzheimer's disease than Caucasians, okay? Alzheimer's disease occurs in all races, but at different rates. And so there's some genetics around that that we don't yet understand, but we want to understand. Fifteen million Americans are care providers for a loved one like the councilman was. Becoming a care provider is becoming increasingly common as we live older and older ages. Rosalind Carter said, "There are three kinds of people in the world. Those who have dementia, those who will get dementia, and those who take care of someone with dementia." Okay? So we're all going to be one of them, some of us are going to be more than one of them, okay? Alright. And these are very expensive diseases. It costs about twenty thousand dollars a year to take care of someone with Alzheimer's disease or another dementia. And these diseases last a long time, twelve to eighteen years. So you do the math. These are very, very expensive diseases. They are going to bankrupt our country. They are really going to bankrupt us unless we figure out how to take care of people better and how to diagnose them better and how to treat them better, okay? Alzheimer's disease is a fatal disease, just like cancer used to be a fatal disease. But we put a lot of money into cancer in this country, and now cancer is a chronic disease. Alzheimer's is sixth leading cause of death in the United States, is in the top ten. It is the fourth leading cause of death amongst African-Americans, okay? It is the only cause of death in the top ten for which there are no treatments and no cure. And I believe, just like we can put a man on the moon, we can find the cure. It's a matter of putting our minds together in this effort and putting our money where our minds are, okay? So you need to know who's at risk. Mostly if you live to old age, you're at risk. Age is something we all want to live to be, older and older, but we don't want to get dementia. Women are more likely than men, as I said, to get dementia, particularly Alzheimer's disease. African and Americans and Latinos, higher risk than Caucasians or Asians. Education. People with higher education have less dementia than people with lower education. So I always say, Head Start is the best dementia prevention program we have. Early childhood education. And when we start taking away money from childhood education, we are adding money to dementia at the end of life, okay? And then vascular disease. If there are problems in your circulation, your circulation feeds the cells in your body and feeds the cells in your brain, those circulatory problems can lead to degeneration in your brain. Hypertension, which is more common in African-Americans, is a risk factor for many different dementias, including Alzheimer's disease. Diabetes, which affects the circulation in the body, is also a risk factor for Alzheimer's disease and other dementias. And high cholesterol or high lipids. So we have a saying, "What's good for your heart is good for your brain." So I was really glad to hear you talking about healthy foods in a grocery store that has healthy alternatives, because those are things that preserve our heart and our brain and let us live well into older age. So clinical research is the way we get the answers. Now I know and I want to acknowledge, in the African-American community, there is a lot of resistance and barriers to participating in research that is well-founded based on history. But I also want to tell you I have an agenda. We cannot figure out how these diseases are similar and different in different populations unless people from different populations participate in research. If the only people in our research studies are middle-aged white men, then we know what happens in middle-aged white men, okay? And over the last twenty, thirty years, we have many more women participating in research. So now we understand diseases in women. But if we don't have people from underrepresented communities, from African-American communities, from Latino communities, come forward and participate in our research studies, then we don't know how these diseases affect those people differently. So I am here really with that agenda to try to encourage you to come forward and participate in research, whatever it is, whether it's breast cancer research, cancer research, or Alzheimer's research. Our research helps us find new ways to identify early cognitive changes, how we can find out if these diseases are happening earlier and earlier. Our research lets us look for biomarkers. So a biomarker is a biological agent that helps you diagnose. So if you go to the doctor and you have your blood drawn and you test for sugar, that's looking for a biomarker for diabetes, okay? Or if you go and get you tested for a sickle cell, that's a biomarker for sickle cell in your blood. We are looking to develop biomarkers so we can have tests for Alzheimer's disease. We have some of these developed already in research and we need to refine them. So some of them have to do with special scans and some of them have to do with looking at particles that are in the cerebrospinal fluid, in that fluid that bathes our brain. But we need people to participate in the research so they can help us find the answers in what is similar about these biomarkers and different in different populations. So we've given you some information. The USC Alzheimer's Disease Research Center has a number of studies that we are actively seeking participation in. We are really looking at people who don't have dementia, yet. We are looking at people who are at risk for dementia. We are looking for people who are sixty years of age and older, who have high blood pressure and/or diabetes and/or high cholesterol, who may have minimal memory concerns or no memory concerns, or have a family member who had dementia. Because that puts you at risk, you share some genes with that person. We're looking for you to come forward and participate. We have a five-year observational study where we will provide MRI scans, we will provide testing at no cost to you and give you the information to take to your medical provider. But we want to see what happens over five years in individuals who are at risk for these kind of problems. We have clinical trials for people who are in the very early stages of these diseases. These are medications that are being tested that can remove those amyloid plaques, remove those tau tangles, and change the biology of these diseases. We know that by the time someone has memory problems, the changes have been happening in their brain for ten to fifteen years. It's like when you have your heart attack, God forbid, it's not the steak you ate the night before. It's all the steaks you've been eating for twenty years, right? So we now know it's a similar process, it's things that you do for many, many years that lead to these changes, and we're trying to understand that. So please think about participating. I've given you the number here, you can call. We've given you handouts, I put my cards outside, and you can call the councilman's office even, and they will get in touch with you. Thank you very much.
Doctor, doctor, do not leave yet. I know some of us mature adults may have a few questions or comments. So if you'll give, anyone that wants to ask any questions or comments, please raise your hands. We'll bring the mic. Okay?
Yes. I just wanted to know, would sleep apnea have anything to do with this also?
Yes, very important. Sleep apnea does lead to cognitive impairment, changes in memory and thinking. It's a risk for Alzheimer's as well for other dementing disorders. When you have sleep apnea, you stop breathing. Your oxygen doesn't get to your brain, the brain cells need oxygen. Yes, so it's a reason to identify sleep apnea and treat sleep apnea very aggressively. Thank you for asking.
Young lady up front? No? You're letting it go? Okay, we got a couple more over here. I wonder when some men were going to raise their hands. I mean, we all have the same issue.
Doctor, thank you for all of that. I think it was important to hear that if you go to the doctors and they have the attitude, "Well, you're old anyway." You know, I've been a patient advocate for a very long time. So it's important for whoever does attend those visits, those hospital visits or doctor visits, I mean, drill down on them, don't allow them to do that to your family.
I would say, if someone says, "What are you saying, you're old?", that's ageism, and that's just like racism.
That's right.
And it should not be tolerated.
Alright. Gentlemen in the back. It's right there. Fantastic.
Thank you, doctor, for being here. With your good, informative advice, we should all take a heat in it. I got a question about diabetic condition. I've seen many doctors over the years and it seems that there's no cure, or less than no cure that we have. Could you share something on that for us?
For diabetes?
Diabetic condition, yes.
So, well...
I mean, we, some of us are taking pills, some of us taking insulin, but it doesn't seem to work, or...
Well, first of all, managing diabetes, the cornerstones of managing diabetes are diet and exercise. And only when diet and exercise fail do we resort to pills. But the reality is, I've been in practice for thirty-five years, that getting people to change their diet and to exercise is much more difficult than getting them to take a pill, okay? It's much less costly to diet and exercise than take a pill. But people always want the easy way out, okay? If you walk a thousand, ten thousand steps a day, your need for diabetes medicine will go down dramatically over three months, okay? So I would say, get yourself one of those things that tell you how far you walk and walk ten thousand steps a day. You don't do it all at once, do it in one thousand steps at a time. And you will see your weight go down and you will see your sugar better controlled and your need for medication go down, okay? So don't park in the closest parking spot, park in the farthest parking spot. And let the disabled people use the close one and walk.
There you go. Let's give the doctor a hand if you would, please. Dr. Freddie Siegel Gagin, USC. But again, I want to stress, you weren't with me on March 4th when I was at the meeting and I felt like I was alone because dealing with my friend and not knowing what is responsible to be as a caregiver. And one of the worst things you have to deal with is a friend you love and you have to remove that friend's independence. The number one issue that we fought till his dying day was I took away the car keys. Major, major, major. But the caveat was that, that we used his car to go to the doctor's office. So when we made the appointments, I drove him in the car and he called his car, "This is my baby." And that's how we was able to compromise for me to do the grocery shopping, make the doctor's appointments, go and see him, but also understanding, I couldn't be with him twenty-four hours a day. And in fact, I didn't have the skills and ability to cook three meals a day plus snacks. So I was able to find an organization that specializes in caregiving. Now I paid his bills, did all the errands and that kind of stuff, but he needed a companion. A person alone, you're depressed, family won't come to see you, that you feel like a misfit. Can you feel me? And so as a consequence, you'd be amazed of the power of a caregiver that will come fix him hot meals. He still had the skills to take his own shower and also get dressed. But the ideal of being able to fellowship, be able to fix the meals that he likes to eat, have the snacks he likes to eat, have a person as a companion to watch the movies of his choice or watching TV. Families, for some reason, just don't take the time. I don't care to take the time, and what they want to do is put him in a nursing facility. And he says, "I want to live in my home until I die." And if nothing else, I did for him was that I held him in his house until he passed away. Until he passed away. Until he passed away. But in order to do the selection, where do you find a caregiver that you now have to entrust? Your loved one, the contents of his, of his home, as well as the ability to care for his health? Well, I was blessed because someone introduced me to a company called Always Best Care Senior Services. And I will let this person share with you, who happens to be the owner and president, that has made a difference in my friend's life, in my life, and will be friends for life. Please help me recognize Ms. Lali Ramazone Marzoni.
Thank you. Thank you. I first want to thank Councilmember Ralph Franklin for the invitation. I also wanted to thank his assistant, Ms. Thomas, who's been very supportive, and I wanted to thank all of you for being here. As the councilmember mentioned, my name is Lali Ramazani. I'm the president and owner of Always Best Care Senior Services. I'm also a certified senior advisor, which makes me semi-specialist, you know, having a better understanding and appreciation for what the elderly goes through. If you could move to the next slide, please. Thank you. In 2011, the first group of baby boomers, born in 1946, turned 65. We are seeing the biggest and quickest aging of America's population in our history. We are all living longer due to the advancement in medicine and technology. So what happens with that? You know, the previous speaker talked about the Alzheimer's and dementia. Not all of us are going to get Alzheimer's and dementia, but many of us are going to live longer. We are going to live in our 90s, you know, we have clients that are in their 100s. So what happens is that the body goes through the normal process of aging, just as, you know, I'm not as fast and as flexible as my teenage daughter is. As we get to be 80s, in our 80s and 90s, we are not going to be as flexible as, as mobile as we were when we were in our 40s and 50s. So part of that creates some issues with our balances. As we get older, our hearing may not be as good as it used to be before. As we get older, our eyesight may not be as good as it was before. And all of these could create some challenges, some limitations for us, where we want to just do our daily routines, basically. If you could go to the next slide, please. So balance, the next slide, please. Thank you. So balance is one of the major issues. I've been in business for four years and I've seen more share, more than my share of, you know, individuals that are healthy, but because they have balance issues, they fall. And when they fall, either they break, you know, a bone, if it is a knee, a hip, or anything like that, or other issues that follow after a fall, right? So balance is a major issue. According to CDC, one out of three Americans over age 65 falls each year. Every 15 seconds, an adult is treated in the emergency room for a fall. So what also happens, what comes with that is that if we have challenges with our balance, with our mobility, if you are, especially if we do take a fall, then we will be concerned about leaving the house, right? We don't want to walk too much because we are afraid we may walk. As we get older, we may have challenges with our continence, right? Going to the bathroom may be difficult on one hand, on the other hand, getting to the bathroom because it requires the walking to the bathroom. We may not be able to take the walks, the steps, as fast as we should. So for those reasons, we may also have concerns and try to self-limit ourselves. We will self-isolate ourselves. So a lot of our elderly, unfortunately, that because of these challenges, again, especially if they're living on their own, they decide not to leave the house as often. If we don't leave the house, if we don't leave the room, we don't go out to get some fresh air, you know, it could change our moods. It could change our, you know, our emotions, basically. Some resort to alcohol. Alcohol could cause more depression. And I listed suicide, and it is unfortunate, but the rate of suicide among the elderly is higher than the rate of suicide among the teens. One of the reasons is that, you know, what I just talked about. The other reason is that, you know, when somebody is a teenager, teenagers are expected to go to school. So if they don't go to school maybe one day or two days, or the parents or the family knows about them, then they can come and, you know, help them. Whereas with the elderly, nobody is really expecting to see the elderly outside the house, especially if you're retired, you're at home. So you may stay at home for a longer period of time. Family is busy, children are busy with their own lives. So when you're at home by yourself, then all of those could cause, you know, additional challenges. On top of that, as we get older, we are under more medication. Now, if you, you know, have the alcohol and then you have the medication, the side effects that the two would have, would have, you know, worse, would create more situation in you. So if you could go to the next slide. So what are the options? Councilmember Franklin talked about it. There are two options as we get older. And I think one of the, and again, the councilmember, you know, repeatedly mentioned, knowledge is power. Like I said, I've been in business for four years and one thing I feel is part of my mission is also to educate and inform everyone about the options that are available. That doesn't mean that you have to make the decision now or today, but it says it informs you about what options are available, especially because getting a caregiver or moving out of the home is an emotional decision. And when it happens, more likely than none, we are going to be overwhelmed. And at that time, if we don't have any information about the options, it will create a much more challenging situation for us to make the right decision, right? So there are two options. One is that what is considered as age in place, and that is for everything that I talked about, you know, some of those challenges or limitations that we may have, again, as we get older, that you hire a caregiver. One, like councilmember was talking about, and the caregiver can help you with some of the activities and I will go through some of that. The other option is that if home is not the best option, then you want to move into a community. And in both of these areas, our company can help with that and I talk a little bit more about that. So if you could go to the next slide, thank you. So I want to just mention briefly about our company. Our company is part of a franchise, but each office is owned and operated independently. Like I mentioned earlier, we have been in business for four years. State of California, as of last year, put a new mandate where all the in-home care companies need to be licensed through the state. There are many states across the country that had this requirement. California just established it as of last year. So we are licensed through the state and through the Department of Social Services. We are, as part of our business, we are insured, bonded, and we have workers' compensation. All the caregivers that we hired are our employees. They're not independent contractors, so we have an oversight over what they do. And as part of the licensing requirement, the state also put a mandate that all the caregivers need to be registered and fingerprinted through the state. So if you go to the state website, you will see the name of my company and all the others that are licensed. And also if a caregiver, due to some criminal records, you know, even 10, 20 years ago, we have seen this, maybe even a misdemeanor about 20 years ago, if they are not approved through the registration, you will see a comment next to their name. So this all is the state is putting some more steps in place to, you know, create more safety and security for, for the elderly. And the state is recognizing the fact that we are getting older and there needs to be new measures, you know, around that. So the next slide, please. So like I said, we can help in both areas. So the first option that I talked about was having a caregiver. And again, aside from Alzheimer's or anybody, somebody that may have a terminal illness, that obviously you do need additional assistance, even for individuals that are healthy, right? As we get older and we live longer, because of the challenges we have, we may have, we may need some assistance with bathing, right? Again, if balance is an issue, we are in the shower, the floor is slippery, you know, if our blood pressure drops because there is too much steam or anything like that, we are not as flexible and agile as we were before. So it may take us a while to grab, you know, that, that door or whatever it is that, you know, that we need to hold on to. So having a companion or a caregiver in the house can be an assistant. They can still provide you your privacy, but be around to make sure that you do not fall. You know, some could be bed-bound, some, you know, some clients, so feeding, they would need assistance with that, with dressing, continence, I talked about, using the toilet, going to the bathroom, transferring from, if someone is on a wheelchair, transferring from the wheelchair, you know, to the bed, from the bed, you know, to the car, providing transportation for doctor's appointments. A lot of times, the family members would like to be with the mom or dad at the doctor. So what the caregiver can do is that they can drive the, you know, mom or dad to the doctors, then the children can meet at the doctor, be with the doctor, you know, hear what the, you know, what, what needs to be done, but then have some peace of mind that they can go back to their work. And, you know, mom or dad is being taken home by the caregiver in a safe environment. When they go home, they have proper meals. Nutrition is very, very critical. You know, even if you are younger, when you live on your own, a lot of time, we don't feel like cooking for ourselves. Now, as we get older, again, balance, walking, if we are using a walker, grocery shopping, which requires transportation, all of that could be, you know, could create more challenges. And if we are home and we are not eating properly and we need to take medications also, again, all of that would have side effects, plus it would make us weaker, which puts us in a vicious cycle, right? So the idea is when we have a caregiver at home, that can also help with light housekeeping, you know, doing the laundry, making sure that the person is taking the medications that they're prescribed by the doctor, they don't forget to take those medications. All of this would allow the person to live independently longer at their home. I mean, that's the message I would like to get to everyone, that for those who can afford it, there is no shame of having a caregiver at home. It is a luxury. And the caregiver would allow the person to be living independently, healthy, safely, longer at home. The extent of the support that the caregiver can provide is based on a care plan. So based on an assessment, we, you know, we determine with the individual, with the family members, how much care the person needs. And if the person, like, you know, councilmember was mentioning, is able to do most of the things himself, the caregiver is not going to be, you know, to forcing it on them that, "Well, I need, I must be doing this," giving them a special, still, you know, the privacy that they need. Thank you. Next slide, please. So the other option is that if home is not, you know, the appropriate place to stay, there could be different conditions. One is that if the person, for instance, has Alzheimer's and the kind of Alzheimer's that is considered a wanderer, right? Sometimes when people have Alzheimer's, they cannot stay in one place. They constantly say, "I want to go home." So if they are in a room by themselves, they open the door to the house, they walk out. That causes major safety issues, right? So for that individual, you either need to have someone that is watching them all the time, or they cannot stay home by themselves. So that's, that's one issue. The other side of it is that some of us, especially if we have lost our spouse and we are at home by ourselves, and again, family members are not around as much, but we are social individuals, if you are at home, maybe with just one caregiver, that doesn't create that environment, that stimulation that we need. Whereas staying at home may not, again, be the best option. The third reason for that could be when you're staying at home and you have a caregiver in general, because the ratio is one to one, you have one caregiver, one for, one client, the costs are usually higher. Whereas if you move outside home to a community where they have many caregivers, then the ratio is different and the cost for the same level of, you know, for the same quality of life could be lower than that. So all of those could be reasons why we want to, we do, may not want to live at home and go out. Now, I made a distinction. I put the space between the two. So there are two options for staying or living outside home. One is if we were to be at a nursing home. The other term for it is called, is called skilled nursing facility, or in short, is called SNF. That's a medical facility. A lot of people use the term nursing home and the communities interchangeably. So I want to make sure we make that distinction. Nursing home is what we want to avoid. Why do we go to a medical facility? Maybe because we fell, right? We had a broken hip. We need, we go to the hospital, then we are sent to a nursing home to go through the rehab. Maybe there are some wounds, you know, we need to get some wound care. What we want to do is we want to stay healthy, so put all the measures that we need to put in place so we can avoid the nursing home. Obviously, you know, if we have some illness, you know, we have to go to the nursing home. Now, the non-medical community is the second option that I was talking about. So when I say home may not be the best option, the next best option could be a non-medical facility. There are different kinds of, they're called communities. So there's an independent living community, is a community where they provide the meals, they have caregiving if it is needed, they help make sure that you take your medication, they do the housekeeping, they do the laundry, they have outings, they have activities, they have transportations. So again, you know, for someone who doesn't need to worry about, doesn't want to worry about all of that, an independent living community would be a good option. Assisted living is basically the same as independent living with additional caregiving, with more caregiving. And then residential care home or board and cares, you may have seen these. These are houses. These are basically regular houses with maybe five or six residents. They are governed by the same rules and regulations at the assist, as the assisted living. So they're all licensed by the state of California and, but what it is, is that you would be living with maybe four or five other residents. You would either have your private room or a shared room. There would be caregivers, they would do the meals, they would do the laundry, they would do the housekeeping and all of that. So the difference between the two would be, one is a larger community, maybe with 50 to 100 to 200 residents, each having their own room. And the other one would be a small house that can, you know, that can accommodate five or six, six individuals. If you could go to the next slide, thank you. So as part of this, the service that we provide is a free service to the clients. So we do the assessment with the clients and, you know, based on the needs, if staying at home is an option, is through the caregiving. If staying at home is not an option, what we do is that we have a database of about at least 70 of these communities, both the large and the small. I personally have visited each one of these communities. I meet with the administrator, take a tour of the community. We have a detailed checklist of what these communities offer, what the price is, what services, what amenities and all of that. So once we do the assessment with the clients or the family members, then we can identify two or three communities that meet the requirements. We can make the appointments. Sometimes the communities have promotions where they waive some of the fees and, so we can help with all of that and that would be as part of, part of the option too. And if we can go to the next slide. How would clients in general pay for these services? So if you have, the third item is long-term care insurance. If you have long-term care insurance, long-term care covers these services. It is, the other options are the personal pay, if the retirement savings, if social security payments, if there's a pension payment will cover that. If you are a veteran or a surviving spouse of a veteran, there is a benefit as part of the veteran's benefit is called aid and attendance. It is different than the medical benefit that you would receive. You could very well qualify, and there are some qualifications for that, but as a veteran, you could qualify for up to $1,700 a month, tax-free, payment by the VA. As a surviving spouse, you could qualify for up to $1,300 to $1,400 a month. And the payments would go directly to your bank account, but there needs to be, you know, go through some, some qualifications for that, basically. And we have been told there are literally billions of dollars of aid and attendance that is sitting on the table because people are not claiming, claiming those, you know, those benefits. So those would be the other options that you can use to, to pay for the services. And the last slide is basically my contact information, you know, my email address. We have a brochure, I think, in your packet and also a couple, you know, articles about arthritis, how to live with arthritis and also, you know, how to reduce the chances of strokes, some good tips, you know, as far as being able to live longer, healthy and safe. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. We'll take a couple of questions or comments. Anyone? We can get the mic right in front. She didn't raise her hand this time. Oh.
Those veteran benefits, are they for all veterans or, or just those who had some, some circumstances in battle or something like that?
Right, so the, it, it is, it's not directly related to any physical, like, you know, disabilities. One of their, like, three or four specific questions that they ask, well, one of the requirements is, for instance, that you need to have served in one of the wars for one day at least, right? And then the others are more around the income and the assets that the individual have. Unfortunately, the threshold for the aid and attendance has remained very low, even though the cost of living has gone up. So they look at those costs. But what happens is that if you are paying for caregiving or moving into a community, you can use that as part of the expenses which would bring down the overall income, which may then qualify you for aid and attendance. which may then qualify you for the aid and attendance benefit.
Okay. Let's, we'll hand her the mic.
You can be a veteran during, during peacetime. Does that not qualify you?
Right. I think for the aid and attendance, there, there is one day of service in, in war, I believe, is part of the requirement. But again, that is, those are the rules that the VA has set up, and, you know, I can share that information, you know, with councilmember, because I don't have all of that information with me. There would be, you know, other organizations that can help with that, with, you know, filling out the forms and all of that.
Okay. Thank you. Short little legs. Okay, Tony.
Hi. Thank you for being here tonight.
Sure.
My wife and I are 24, seven caretakers for her mother, 90, 92 years old, bedridden. She has dementia. We're, we've been doing it for three years, and we haven't had a break. Does your company offer temporary, like, we, we want to maybe have one day a week or so, where we can get somebody to come in for four to five hours, maybe?
Sure.
You know, once or twice a month, so we can have a date or something?
Right. No, of course. And yes, yes, and the services, you know, can be, the frequency, we leave it up to the clients. Sometimes also, you know, some individuals are resistant to the idea. So my recommendation is to start small and slow, so they get used to the setting, having a professional stranger in the house. But absolutely, yes, that's an option too, yes.
Okay. One more question or comment. I think it, gentleman, lady. Okay.
Yes, I have a question about the different communities again.
Sure.
Assisted living, who would normally be eligible or, or would be a candidate to live in assisted living?
Right. For assist, so assisted living is a community where they would prepare, so one of the basics are, they prepare the meals, they do the laundry, they do the housekeeping, they have med techs or caregivers that make sure the individual takes their medication. Now, the extent of the care that they need could vary. So somebody could come in and they could consider, if the individual is able to take their shower, for instance, is able to go to the bathroom, and they just need the basics, they would say, "Well, this individual doesn't need any caregiving." Somebody else needs, says, "Well, I need assistance when I go to the shower and go to the bathroom." They may consider it. So they would assign a caregiver that would be with that individual maybe for a couple hours a day. And that individual, for instance, would be as, you know, care level one. Then there may be somebody else that is on wheelchair and is wearing diapers and needs additional assistance. So all of that, as long as you do not have a medical need, because there are no doctors, and there are some communities that have nurses on staff, but again, they are not licensed to provide medical support. So as long as the person does not have a medical need, then an assisted living community could be suitable for them, yes.
Okay. Let's give Lali a hand, please. Thank you. Thank you, dear. So let me share with you, since I was a caregiver, and I heard the gentleman mention about, "I need time off." So I hear you have a city councilmember dealing with one of the mega projects in the world, and I have a number of phone calls, of potholes, streetlights out, and other issues, and this is still on my plate. I do want you to understand that it's a blessing to identify that when you have Lali and her team that prescreen the caregivers, it does give you a, a level of confidence, knowing that that person that comes into home is not going to be a pedophile, is not going to be a abuser, because they've been prescreened. I also want to stress that there is a difference between being a caregiver and a housekeeper. So when you're talking about, "I want them to fix the meals," anything involving the individual they take care of, including they're incontinent, they spill food as they're eating, that kind of stuff, they will clean the floor, do that, they will do the laundry, they will strip the bed and remake the bed, all that kind of stuff. But as a housekeeper, they, they do the dusting, they do the overall mopping, they do the cleaning of the bathroom, they don't do that. The other thing that's really nice about having a caregiver service that's prescreened, my friend sometime can be cantankerous, and he will say, "I'm tired of her. I want somebody else." Or, "They're not giving me the attention that I need." And I can go to Lali, and without hesitation, I get replacements. The other concern may be, you may have a preference of a male versus a female, a person that speaks a certain language that is able to do that. She's able to provide that kind of accommodations. Again, these are just options, because with my friend, I had to encourage him, as she said, they don't provide medical care. But when I'm working with the internal medical doctor for his well-being, I had to motivate him to exercise, because my goal was to keep him from not going in a nursing facility where he was going to become a vegetable, but be able to enjoy the quality of life of his tender years in his own home. And also, he enjoyed companionship. When he would finish his bath, because I made him take a shower every day, the caregiver was required to stay there for him to bathe, not in the room, but in earshot, so if he did fall, that we were able to take the necessary care. Also, we went over the menus of the hot meals that he should have, or the appet, of the snacks he could have, because I had to make sure he didn't get too much sugar and too much starch, those kind of things. You work with the caregivers for that. And then finally, I do want to stress more, making sure that he had hot meals or balanced meals, because my friend loved ice cream. But I had to make sure, we can do it sparingly, and so his treat was, knowing that for his dinner, he would have a scoop of ice cream to better make that happen. So I've experienced it, as you can hear my testimony about it, and Lali was on my team, and her, her workers were, became my best friends. And so if you have that need, you have that desire, she's still here after the meeting. I think I got two minutes? Give me two. So I want to rush, a couple of things you didn't hear from the other presenters, just remind you, for those that are my regular attendees, that we are recording this. And when we're recording it, the DVD will be made available at our Police Community Center. We've relocated our Police Community Center, which is now at the Citibank Building. Everyone knows the Imperial and Crenshaw, the Citibank Building. We're now in Suite 508, we're the fifth floor. We have multiple rooms. So if you decide you want to have a block club meeting, and you, based upon the size, come look at the rooms and decide which one you want, they're temporary until we move into our new accommodations. My friend, Aaron Elsie, standing to be recognized, he is our police liaison that, that runs, runs at. And it's Monday through Thursday from 11 to 4. So if you have that interest and you, and you want to move forward. And then finally, I will conclude, since we've had so many other subject matters, that we're doing the major remodeling of Crenshaw Imperial Plaza. We worked on all the permits. Some of the new tenants that are geared to come in is Planet Fitness, Chapulti, Five Guy Burgers, and Ono Hawaiian Barbecue. For those that also didn't know, trying to get my, here, there's another restaurant that I have that's coming in, that is located, how many know Imperial and Crenshaw and Village Drive? There used to be Duland's. Before Duland, who remembers before Duland's? Louisiana Chicken. Now that new place is being remodeled for Habit Burger Grill. Just so you know, we're starting to move in a better upscale, quality of food, healthy choices that we've had said. And so in my conclusion, let me read my final remarks. I appreciate your time and attending us to this important information that has been presented this evening. Your presence tonight is strong indication, strong indication, my time's up, of your interest in what is going on in your community and around the city. I thank you for your attendance this evening, the District 4 Town Hall meeting. Did you get something out of this?
Yeah.
Is it worth my time and Ms. Matthews' time to have this? So when you leave today, please let my wife, Mrs. Franklin, who's working with Ms., my boss is over there, Mrs. Franklin, please let Claudette Matthews know, job well done. God bless you all. Have a nice evening.